Mr. Castle? Mr. Byron?
Present.
Mr. Jacob?
Here.
Mr. Arena?
Here.
And Mr. Scholl?
Here.
I expect that we will have some other members joining us. In terms of the seating of members, we are at the moment missing three members. So, I'm, at least for now, I'm going to seat both Diana and Dana. Regular members. Our first order of business is a public Zoom line. We're here this evening. Let me explain briefly how we run meetings. For this evening, the staff will make the presentation regarding Galen Mills is just around. Another one. The commission staff will make the presentation for slide which is already up. When that presentation is completed and during which the members of the commission will be free to ask any questions they wish, we will open it up to the public. What we'll try to do is someone in the audience and someone online, someone in the audience, and someone. We don't place restrictions on how long you can speak. But again, in fairness to those of us up here and members of the public, we ask that you be as brief as possible, but making sure that you cover all the items that are of importance. We say that because you only have one opportunity to speak. So if you take someone a minute to speak, that's fine. Takes another person five minutes, six minutes, seven minutes, that's also fine. Once everyone who wishes to speak has had an opportunity, we'll turn it back to the staff for comments on what they've heard, responses to questions, responses to comments. This really is not a conversation between you and the members of the commission. We're here to listen to what everyone has to say. But we won't be responding tonight. We'll take all this information in and we will come back later meeting after we've had an opportunity to digest the information before we act on that material. I can't tell you for certain when that meeting will be, but it will be noticed, will be published on, and is most likely to occur in late November, December, because this is a lot of condition for us. When you come up to speak, we ask that you give your name and and comments, PG rating. Again, as courtesy to all of us, this meeting is being recorded and we put up online. Exactly. The next meeting which we hold, the meeting at which we expect to take a vote, will also be publicly airing with an opportunity.
Am I missing something, Steve?
Yeah.
I thought that's what we had discussed.
No, so I think we'll kind of jump into my last slide, but we'll be back first. So the idea tonight would just be, which I'll explain a little bit more in a second, would be provide a little detail about some of the changes we've thought about since the regulations were adopted. We go back, sharpen the pencils a little bit more, which will probably take a week or two for us to do, based on feedback tonight. Then set a public hearing date. There are notification requirements for these kinds of changes. So usually it's like 35 days we have to notify surrounding towns. West Cobb, which is the regional planning agency for this part of the state. So we're anticipating a hearing probably in early December, which the actual vote isn't. So tonight's more, it's not an application, it's more just a, hopefully we're explaining stuff to you and then you guys are saying, oh, that makes sense, or do you think about this?
My apologies and thanks.
Tonight? Yes. Yeah.
Okay. With that, I'll turn it over to Steve Clement, Director of Planning and Design.
Thank you, Mr. Schollman. So as I kind of mentioned, back in February, we adopted a completely new set of regulations, which was a pretty big departure from where the old regulations were. We anticipated there would be a period of time where we'd have to make changes and we thought some things weren't going to work. Not exactly sure which ones would be, but we knew some things were going to be implemented then. Things always look great on paper and sometimes they don't pencil out or work on the ground. So over the past nine months or so, we've been working on different things based on feedback and comments we've gotten. We had corrected, over the past six months, we corrected a few things that were really problematic and we adjusted those right away. We had said at the time that we adopted the regulations that we were going to have sessions like this. Maybe we'll do another one next year at some point in time, but we felt this was a good timeframe in which to kind of get feedback and talk about some of the things where we wanted to make some changes. So on the screen, you can see there's six areas that we're going to spend a little bit, I should say actually, four areas we're going to go into in depth that I think probably are going to address a lot of the concerns that I bet you guys have, particularly as it relates to building coverage and impervious surface coverage, figuring out building heights, stories in the flood zone. And then the one area we've heard a lot about lately has been construction of a lot of two-family dwellings in the CD2 zone, which, you know, has been a little bit problematic with some of the new regulations that we put in. So we worked on, I think we have a bunch of edits that we put in, which will loosen up things and then kind of facilitate development that we wanted to see occur based on the regulation changes we've met. So first one that popped up was, we put it, the prior regulations had a standard where we just regulated building coverage, and I probably shouldn't preface this, that saying that, you know, I should have said this from the outset. The changes we're talking about tonight, I think, are on the very technical end of things. There are no wholesale changes to any zones. There's no change to any zoning boundaries. We're not changing densities anywhere, not changing heights significantly anywhere. So it's really just technical changes to try to clean up some of the kind of, kind of some of the new regs that were a little too strict in some areas. So this one was, one of the first ones that caught our attention was prior regulations, we regulated building coverage, which basically is just looking at your area of property and how much building can occupy that site. So that was the standard prior to that and it's based on a percentage. The new regulations went to what's called impervious surface, which looks at the building plus your hardscape, which could be your driveway, patios potentially and those kind of things. That's how some of the commercial zones were regulated and it's overall a better metric, because what we're trying to do is really improve stormwater quality, reduce runoff, reduce flooding. So that's why we went in that direction. But some of the standards that were put in place for the smaller lot zones, so if you were in like the old B-zone with like a 6,000 square foot lot or basically lots under a quarter of an acre, you were really restricted in what you could do. And that's caused some problems, so we recognize that and we've come up with some adjustments to the two standards, which I'll go through in just a second. And what we're hoping to do is get that regulation percentage-wise consistent with what was previously allowed, but at the same time gaining that goal of improving stormwater quality and reducing runoff. So this next slide, it's got a lot of text on it. So I apologize, I'm not expecting anybody to remember that. We'll post the presentation on our website. Obviously, this is recorded, so it's going to be available to watch at a later date on the city's YouTube channel. But what we did was we put in two standards and we tried to mimic what you were allowed to do before in terms of the coverage and impervious surface coverage. And what we found out by just our analysis that we did, if you were in a larger lot, like if you were in a half acre or acre lot, you were fine really with the new impervious surface coverage. It really wasn't detrimental to development patterns. But when you got down to lots that were really under, you know, quarter of an acre, it started to get very cumbersome, especially the smaller you got, it was really restrictive. So what we've done is put in a two-tiered calculation where you have impervious surface and total building coverage. Now, very important to point out that the impervious surface calculation includes buildings as well. So you don't get 35% for the building, then 35% for the impervious surface. But the way the calculation is put forward, it works out pretty well in terms of lining up the old regulations while also allowing for things, driveways and those kinds of things. And there's some other regulation modifications that we'll talk about as well, which also should help lower the total impervious surface calculation by dropping the front setback in the CD2 zone and also loosening up the parking restrictions and where parking garages can go. I didn't know that's been a big challenge for folks trying to do design work in the, especially in the two-family area. So I, like I said, there's a lot of text, I don't want to try to explain all to a T. I'm happy to do that offline, but basically, I think the takeaway I would urge you to think about is that the proposed change lines up similarly to what was in the prior regulations in terms of percentages of building coverage, so you're not being penalized. And we also added additional surface coverage on top of that. And Brian, maybe go down to the next slide, which kind of shows what we're talking about. If you look at the two images on the right, you can, and I know they're small, small images, but you can see that, you know, the majority of those properties are built, whether it's from building structure or it's driveway or patio. So what happens on those properties is whatever water hits the ground is shedding off and running somewhere. It's not being captured on site. This kind of leads to flooding and other problems. So, you know, if you look at the images on the right, you can see there's a much higher percentage of landscape area, whether it's lawn or plantings of some kind. So having that extra area allows for onsite retention of the water and also will, you know, adds to the ability for more greenscape, reduces heat island effect and those kinds of things. So that's kind of the impetus for keeping the regulation in there, but also loosening it up to allow the kind of development that we really were hoping to see as a result of the changes. This is a minor change, but it's kind of an important one to talk about in terms of, and we added a graphic, so how you figure out where your grade is, it is always a hot topic of conversation because it affects building height and affects, you know, flood zone impacts as well. So we're just kind of removing a ability to gain some extra height within the flood zone properties by just removing that fourth ability that used to take place in the regulations. We've also added the graphic because sometimes people had some issues with the proposed text. So I think the graphic helps outline how that determination is. We've also added additional graphics related to calculation building height, just because what was in the text prior was just text. And I think this explains it a little more graphically. We made some changes to kind of, one area that became a concern, I'd say, was amplified in the way and in some of the smaller lot zones in East Norwalk was, when you're in a flood zone, you have oftentimes the lower level is unfinished space. And that's a FEMA requirement, but folks were either getting penalized by having that extra story down at the lower level or the height in ways they were able to tweak the regulations ended up with these really multi-structures, especially on the upper levels. So they were putting on extremely large dormers. So it almost appeared to be the three to four-story building at times. And when you're in areas with tight lots that are 6,000, 5,000 square foot lots and you have tight setbacks on the side and then someone who has an older home where then the next door neighbor builds up to the mass, maximum extent they're allowed, you get a large loom and it really impacts the neighborhood. So what we've tried to do is clarify where those height measurements are taken to and then clarify in terms of the flood zone, how the stories are counted and where they're counted. So here's a couple of examples of, you know, I think the image on the left is kind of an interesting design, I would say, but they, you know, you can see when you're on the sides, when they take full advantage of all the metrics that were allowed in the regulations in terms of area calculations and height calculations, it almost appears to be a three or a three-plus story building, which really kind of impacts what the neighborhood feels like. Same with the image on the right where they really, they're taking full advantage of what you can do. And it's a tricky balance accounting for the flood zone because we want to have flood compliant structures that are, you know, elevated and fully, you know, fully, hopefully savable in a storm event. But at the same time, you don't want something built out to the exact square footage footprint of the property to really loom and impact the neighboring properties. So we tweaked the story definition to try to tweak the story definition and the basement definition. This one's just a simple change. The old, I should say, oh, the current regulation has the definition of story within a basement within the definition, so we clarified that on the next one. And where we made the most significant change is looking at what a story is, especially in a flood zone. So if you're not in a flood zone, if you think about a conventional house, you pull up, so long as the foundation is not exposed more than three feet, that lower level doesn't count as a story. But in a flood zone, you're dealing with different, different set of rules because you have to elevate more. You're not allowed to finish that ground floor space. It can be just storage or you can park your cars in there. FEMA does not allow you to finish. It's just, that's the federal law and we follow that law. So so long as that lower area within the flood zone is uninhabitable space, like I said, it can be storage, you can park your cars there, that's fine. You can have breakaway walls if they meet the flood requirements. So long as more than 50% of the floor height of that lower area is below the base flood elevation, we're not going to count that as a story. So I know we're dealing with some technical, technical zoning stuff, but I think that that's what some of our other surrounding communities have done and as part of trying to figure this regulation out, we spent a lot of time on this. We reached out to probably at least a half dozen different architects and designers who work in these areas and, you know, they said, well, in this town, we do this and it works well. So we tried to piecemeal things from different communities that we thought would be workable and we thought would also, you know, as the goals I stated, or try to reduce that bulk and not have them occupy every square foot piece of property that they could, but at the same time not have it be so restricted that they could only build a one and a half story house where all the neighbors could be two. So I think we've got close to the happy medium as we're going to get, but you know, we're happy to keep looking at it in some ways. And here's a couple of examples of, you know, and these are not Norwalk examples, but we thought these were good images to kind of show what we're talking about here. How we measure height in general and how we regulate height in general, it really is, comes from three different factors. One is a story calculation, so what is a story? We kind of went through that quickly. Another one is a height, which you measure from that finished grade. So whatever your, your ground level is and whatever you fill you bring in, that's where the height is measured from. And so there's height measurement to the midpoint of the roof and there's a height measurement to the peak of the roof. The third way we control that height is by what's called the half story. So the half story is really, if you think about the image on the right, that's where that, those peaks are up there. That half story is basically a percentage of that upper floor and how high the ceiling height can be. So we regulate the height in three ways and it's meant to make sure that if you're, you have some flexibility, but at the same time, you're kind of, have some belts and suspenders around how big of a volume you can come into. And the last thing we did to regulate height, so in the, the changes that we adopted last year, we bumped the building height up across the board to 35 feet, 35 feet to the midpoint of the roof. That was taller than you could previously do in like the old B-zone and C-zone. But based on feedback we got during the process, we were recommending that we drop that midpoint back down to 32 feet. So that will, the regulations allow you to fill three feet on your property. Do I have to go into a completely? I take my house as an example, it's built in 1958 and they kind of built it in a little bit of a bowl. So when I get rain, it kind of puddles against my house. You really don't want that. You want the ability for the water to shed away, shed away from your foundation, but at the same time, you don't want it to mound up so much that your house is elevated an extra 10 feet above your neighbor or the grade is so high that the water sheds off and is now running into your neighbor's yard. So we're trying to, to again, achieve that happy medium. So we think by allowing that three feet of filling on the property, we help ensure, you know, a better constructed house, but by dropping that height down three feet, you kind of level out what those height impacts are going to be on the neighboring properties. Yeah. And again, this is similar to what we just talked about. I kind of talked through my slides before I got to my slides, but this is just kind of reiterating where those grade measurements are and where the height determinations come.
The next topic that we're going to talk about is CD2 zone, which is the two-family zone, and then specifically two-family dwellings. I see a couple of people in the audience who I spent a lot of time talking with about developing some duplexes and kind of issues that they're running into when they actually start to try to put, bend the paper and build one of these. So some of the issues that the old regulations had that we had gotten rid of with new regulations was, under the old regulations, you needed additional lot size or additional lot width to build a two-family dwelling. It's what is now the CD2 zone. We got rid of that and said, if you had a whole property in the CD2 zone, you can now build a duplex, which we think is a good improvement to try to facilitate more the development of these type of structures. But when you start stacking other regulations that would get implemented on top of that, it made it inflexible or almost impossible for any folks to actually utilize the ability to build a family property. So some of the issues that we were running into were impervious surface coverage, which Steve had addressed earlier. So we already addressed that under the proposed changes. The next is the total number of parking spaces that we require for duplexes or at least the location of where we require them to be. Facade requirements and limitations on where an attached garage can be and how much of the facade it can occupy. Maximum driveway width, driveway setbacks from the property line, just building setbacks. So again, as you start stacking all of these different requirements that we had on top of each other, it made it most impossible for folks with like a 50-foot wide lot to build duplex on. So again, here's the existing requirements. The garage can only be 30% of the total, can only be 30% of the total facade width. All parking spaces have to be in the rear yard, just the front setback plus 20 feet. So most part, that means 50 feet behind the front property line. There has to be a total of four parking spaces and they cannot be tandem. They each need to have their own individual backup space. 30-foot front yard setback, six-foot side yard setback and 15-foot rear yard setback. Driveway also had to have a five to 12 and a half foot setback from the property line. So again, when you have a 50-foot wide lot and then you start saying, okay, well, each side is six feet, you've lost 12 feet, then you need to put a driveway in and the driveway has to be five feet off. That loses you about another eight feet off of that. And as you start stacking these things on top of each other, you no longer can really do a side-by-side townhouse style duplex. So what you see here for images on the right most side is an actual soup rose I'm going to change. So the, the image on the right is what somebody has actually been trying to build, which is a duplex. And kind of the goal was originally we wanted all the parking to go in the rear, but what ends up happening is that turns their entire backyard into a parking lot, which we don't think is necessarily the best thing or the best approach for development. It's a lot of impervious surface. So what you see on the left image is kind of a better idea of what we were striving for with that. But there are changes that need to be made in order to facilitate that type of development. So we're kind of at this crossroad of how do we get all these type of structures? So again, the ones on the left, right now, you cannot build under our regulations because they have front facing garages that occupy more than 30% of the facade. And for the most part, they have one parking space per unit or you could call it two if you allow for tandem parking spaces. And then what we have on the right are images of what the regulations were trying to get. You're probably going to have some significant issues in terms of them actually being feasible to build. And then how do we prevent this from happening? This is not a Norwalk house, so I don't feel bad about putting it on the screen. It's one that I grew up near, so essentially, how do we prevent that? So if we as a community decide that these are the type of duplexes we want to see, both the top and the bottom, we, what we're proposing is to sort of give two different options to developers to let them choose which one they want to construct with the goal of requiring about a 36-foot wide building. At least that would be a target with, to achieve. Again, that's based on research that we looked at. That's based on speaking with folks, looking at actually building these duplexes. And then if you go into, for example, our CD3 zone, which allows for townhouse construction, if you want to build three townhouses next to each other, each one has to be 18 feet wide minimum. So duplex, 18-foot wide minimum for two is 36. So if we are going to allow for garages at the front of, the front of the facade, what we would do is add language to, instead of use 30% of the facade width, to say you have a maximum garage width of 20 feet, we'd increase the maximum driveway width from 10 to 20 feet. This is because DPW has standards that exist where you technically cannot have two separate driveways accessing the same premises. So they would need to have one driveway accessing sort of that shared garage, which you'll see in that bottom image. So we would kind of count that as one driveway. Allow for tandem parking spaces, so that would mean that with development, they would say, okay, I'm putting one space per unit in the garage and then the next person for their second car is going to park in the driveway. And we would count that as two parking spaces for each. And then what we would do is also reduce the front yard setback to 20 feet, pull the building closer to the street, which provides more room in the backyard. And then to further facilitate other duplexes, like the top image where they are going to have their driveway go into the backyard, we would continue to require that the maximum driveway width be 10 feet. Make the change that tandem parking spaces also be allowed. Eliminate the side yard setback for driveways and retaining wall so that those can go closer to the side property lines to get with into the parking. And then again, reduce that front yard setback to 20 feet. That is twofold to kind of fit the parking in the rear. And again, pull that building closer to the street and give that more pedestrian-friendly sense for the front.
So there are, and I'm not going to talk about in depth at all, but just some items to flag for public consumption. There are some other items that have come up as part of the process that we wanted to just bring to your attention. One was a proposal to allow child daycare centers in residential zones. Just to clear up any misconception, we're allowed to have daycare centers now. It's not like a new concept. The child daycare center basically allows more kids. So it would be, the proposal would be to allow them by special permit under certain conditions. We can go, we can show you a little more of the conditions if you want to, but we'll wait to Q and A for that. There is a regulation in the commercial zones, really more in the urban core areas about when you get above four stories in a building, you have to start to step the building back. Right now, the the current standard is you have to step the entire floor back. We're trying to loosen that up a little bit to kind of allow a little more architectural variety. Not the architects designing those buildings is really what our end goal is. We've got some language to deal with that. There is a change in the definition of what a commercial vehicle is because our old standard really, when you think about it, I don't know if we can show you what that is, but the older standard wasn't consistent and stayed statute and basically anybody with a pickup truck might technically be in violation of that. So that doesn't make sense. So we'd rather just be consistent with statute. Some of the regulation changes that went into effect were detrimental to a lot of the waterfront clubs because the waterfront clubs are all in residential zones. So applying single-family standards to waterfront club really doesn't make sense because they are, you know, ten feet from the facility where they have lots of parking, they have lots of different things going on that you and I don't have going on at our house. So we think it's a good idea to treat them differently. That way we're not having them come with variances and kind of make their lives miserable, facilitate a little easier. And what some we talked, we did talk about the driveway changes, the the old regulations didn't have any setbacks for driveways. The drivers can be right up against the property line. Somehow in the standards, we actually had it written in two different numbers. We said, both of them were probably a bad idea. So now the minimum standard we're proposing is to go down to three feet. And so what that three feet will do will allow a little bit of a vegetated buffer between your neighbor's property and the driveway. Keeping in mind though, that DPW still needs to improve the location of these driveways and they do have sometimes separation distances between driveways and curbs. So you still have to comply with that. Some other items, this is more for the commission's edification that we'll talk about, you know, tonight or at a subsequent meeting is, you know, the the question of exempting parking in the CD four. We had a request to reduce the or modify the language for PD chargers in buildings and Brian and I pretty quick solution for that. We anticipate some comments from TNP about regulation changes and we've argued with a couple with DPW, which are very minor. The zoning board of appeals had a couple of changes requested in terms of the roles and responsibilities of the ZBA. And I think we're, you know, outside of a couple of items, I think we're in agreement with them. There's also been a lot of talk about vape shops. Vape shops were not a defined term until the regulations became effective in February. They seem to proliferate consistently. One change that staff have recommended is to require them by special permit. The biggest problem is, and I don't think it's going to be a zoning fix, is I don't think we can fix it, is any retail establishment can sell vape products, just like most places can sell cigarettes. So I can't go into every gas station that's got a display area of vape products and then shut them down. So it's not going to work like that. I think the best method, and we've worked closely with the police department on this, is having it done through an ordinance where they can regulate it differently. I think zoning is just not the best tool for that, but we'll try to make the ones that are vape oriented, where that's like their primary business is a vape shop or a smoke shop. That's how we'll regulate those very strictly. But if if somebody's got a small display area in their store or retail area where they're just a small piece of it, I don't know if zoning is the best tool for that. Because the current standard is if you've had twenty-five percent of your product area as vape, then you were a vape shop. But going out and figuring out twenty-five percent of goods in a store, when those goods can come and go and change at any moment, is really going to be inefficient. So going forward, I talked about this a little bit at the beginning. Tonight is just a very brief overview on on some very specific topics that staff has identified and gotten a lot of feedback on that are problematic. And I think they were problematic because we tried to blend a traditional zoning code with what's called the form-based code, which what's the model we've gone to commercial areas and the multifamily areas. So some of that melting together, plus a lot of things that we never regulated before, but should have. So some of the standards that we put in didn't quite match up with what was happening on the ground. So that's the the process of why we're recommending these modifications tonight. As I mentioned, the goal is for us, us being Brian and I and our staff to go back and make edits based on feedback from the public, feedback from commission, post a new document on our site that's got all the other changes and what we talked about tonight, and then set a public hearing date for probably early December, mid-December, based on when we can get the changes done. And ideally, we'd have those effective January one. I apologize for folks working on projects that have been kind of stymied and delayed because of some of these changes. As Brian mentioned, our goal was to, you know, one of the goals that we had was to try to facilitate more two-family housing because we thought that was some way to kind of reduce the housing front and also increase homeownership and help, you know, in a very incremental way bring some places down. But the standards we put in, we understand were too restrictive. So that's why we're trying to get them to a point where I think they're pretty good now and I think it's equitable for all sides to get a lot of the goals that the city has identified, plus identify, you know, some of the other goals that they missed. With that, you know, we're happy to take questions from the commission and then turn it over to the right, before we go to the topic. Mission members have any comments? Any questions to the screen? Yeah. So I, to get us more specific, I'd have to check in with the ordinance meeting, but we did have a really productive police myself, health department as an event as well with members of council talking about that because and I think, and I don't want to speak with the chief, if the chief was talking about there's a good model to follow and that could have a pursue them. So I think that's a good strand because I just think trying to either, you know, if we could, which I'm not sure we do, but we could just not allow them at all. That would make it easy, but I don't want to believe we can do that because you know, I don't know what's the difference between cigarettes and vape products. There's a lot of similarity between the two. We can regulate the separation distances like we did, we can increase it. Like in going to special permit, we can lower the percentage if we felt that was appropriate. I just don't know from a zoning standpoint. I haven't seen the documents. Yeah. And 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 Brian and I talked about that quite a bit because I'm always trying to think down the road, what's going to be positively and what's going to come up negatively. And we had a ton of conversation about that. And a couple of things, the the majority of the CB two lots, especially East Norwalk is the easiest one to look at. They're all lined up. You know, so you have like first street, second street, third streets, you have back-to-back lots on each street. The majority of them are fifty-foot long. So that's just the grid they would be. If they were fifty-five feet, it would be a much easier conversation, but they're fifty feet. So there's another change that we put in that I think door, it's not, we are allowing for backup spaces as of right in the front yard setback. It's it's really intended as a backup space, but I don't think you can tell me that there. So I think that also provides another area on your property there to another space. And we've also, and I think you had in your graphic, I think we provoke propose to allow the driveway width to be wider. So that does allow for more room. And with that, I think with that additional space, there's really but that does show you do have that ability to have that kind of area that would be that's up. And that is, I should point out, if if you are on an arterial in the street, that is we don't want, we don't avoid people backing the street because it's always a dangerous situation. But on some roads, it's not as much of an issue, but on some roads, it's amazing.
Anything? Yeah, just a quick comment. I think there's obviously been great regulations structure, but you know, my my concern has always been which makes it more along that house we've got to build. I grew up in it had one car garage and one bathroom. And that's not life and just wondering if there can't be some consideration, especially especially on the streets that are old sass, but I was thinking if people can't park in the driveway because it's only eight feet wide or ten feet in the W one car garage, then park it on the street. And to me, that's much more of a problem than having a little more impervious surface possibility of car parking inside the setback. Assuming that it is still the same, don't use the parking ground, it's only regulations. So perhaps there's some consideration specific prescription that's house that's in bar garage.
Yeah, we did put that that clause that I, the graphic that was up before, there was a clause put in the regulations we adopted in February that did account for those lots that couldn't provide parking anywhere else. To the point you brought up, the the house was built in nineteen fifty and it's supposed to be off the property line and to one-car garage. There's no way you're going to get parking around the side of the rear. I have to, this is your own spot. So we've been putting allowance in to meet that.
But not not for building the driveway.
For parking the car, but we, the proposal now is to increase the allowed driveway width to twenty feet. So that adds a second, that, you know, basically doubles it. And and you know, there are things, you know, you can also, I mean, people don't always have to build or develop it as impervious basketball. There's ways they might do that. Impervious, miscurvious in a voice. Anything else? Okay. And then let's go to public comment. Yeah, we did not put a sign-up sheet out, so I think it's a small enough group. If you just raise your hand and sure, go ahead. Please, your name and your address, please.
Good evening. My name is Lou Garcia. And I'm a longtime resident of Norwalk. I've been here for fifty years. I'm also an architect and and been practicing architecture in Norwalk for the past thirty-five years. So I go way back with codes and regulations. And you create the regulations, I have to interpret them. And then I have to be able to convince my clients that it's a good thing to do. So it's on me to make sure that your regulations are not only enacted, but also well-presented and it works. And the reason I think we're here today is because I do have quite a few clients in Norwalk that are holding, waiting for this thing to be resolved because they bought property or they have property or they have plans. And now they're in limbo because the regulations change. And now we're unable to proceed with some of these projects. I always talk to this, to the to the sun officials, Michelle and Tammy, and I always get the same response. Well, Mr. Garcia, you're correct. But there's nothing we can do because that's what the regulations call for. So that's what we changed in the regulations, not because, you know, the zoning board got up one morning and said, let's change the regulation. It's because we we as architects and developers and owners decided that the regulations were written incorrectly. That's why we're here. So my question, one of the questions, I have many, because I think even now, it still doesn't look right. I go back with the regulations since Mr. Bradley. I'm not sure if anybody here remembers Bradley. But back in those days, it was so much simpler. We got so much more done. And and yeah, it was in all times, but but let's not get crazy about these regulations, okay? Let's let's make sure we sometimes think about what is, you know, common sense. We forgot all about common sense in this country. You know, anyways, I'd like to point out a couple of things. I'm sorry if I'm a little hoarse tonight. I had fibrosurgery and not long ago, so make make you throw us a little horse. But the other thing I went to say is that we talked about this fifty-foot wide lots and I have a client here who has one. I have another one that's probably on Zoom and and some others. And and that's a real problem. And I'm glad it's been resolved. But I'm asking, the question is that if we all know it's incorrect and needs to be rectified, why do we have to wait until January or February or March? According to this, you know, to this committee, nothing is done very quickly in this town. We need some resolutions quickly. I'm asking if we're so, if if everything looks to be correct and everything's going to be passed, and I think it's a really good idea to 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 rectify this quickly. Can we, can we get a variance or or can we, can we, can we get something that my clients could be expedited so we can get more in and get this project done? I'm asking a question. In reference to the specifics, I'm not sure how much time I have because I could be here probably a good portion of the evening because it's a lot of regulations we're changing, gentlemen and ladies, a lot of regulations. This shouldn't happen. I had the code all worked out before and now we change it and we got all these regulations to deal with again. How many times are we going to do this? Anyways, getting getting back to some specifics and and I think even with the code like I was saying today, I think still kind of incorrect. The idea of having to have a driveway three feet away from the property line. I'm not sure why that's that's required. I know you're trying to get a buffer between you and the neighbor. But for the longest time, we had driveways that went to the driveway, to the to the setbacks, the setbacks. You you can drive to the setback as long as you take care of coverage, as long as you take care of drainage. We had driveways to the edge. Now we're going back three feet before we're supposed to go twelve feet. That's what the original regulation shows now, twelve feet. Can you imagine that? Like the, I'm sorry, he was saying, if you add the math, you end up with a with a house that's about twelve feet wide. That's crazy. And then and then now we're going back. Okay, we say, well, twelve feet is too far. We'll go back to three feet. I think three feet is still too much. You know, let's let's go, let's go to zero, one and a half. You know, let's let's give a little space so we can get this, you know, last to properly be fit into into the site. The other thing about retaining walls, you're saying retaining walls have to be five feet away from the property line. So if I have a driveway that needs a retaining wall, hold on, I I can't do it because 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 the sign needs a retaining wall, but the but the but but the retaining wall has to be five feet, but my driveway could be three feet. I I think retaining wall should be as close as it could be to the to the to the property line. As long as it meets the requirements of, you know, not not projecting into somebody's As long as it meets the requirements of, you know, not, not impacting into somebody's yard. And as long as it's the foundations that are properly and all the work is done correctly. And the reason I understand is that because you don't want to have a run, uh, what, what are draining off into the neighbor. That could be taken care of by hiring a civil engineer. That's what we do. Drainage is all about civil engineers. I'm not, I don't know how to, you know, do a drainage calculation. I, I could, but I don't have the license, but anyways, that's the reason why we have civil engineers. We talked about average grade. Somebody's talking about average grade. I know what average grade is. Is the average around entire perimeter of a house, but I can't do it because it needs to be done by a civil engineer. Or, or better yet, by, by surveyor who knows what they're doing with, with all the different elevations. We don't do it ourselves. I know, and people know for a long time what average grade is. It's not something that's new. Second. When we talk about impervious areas, can gravel be considered impervious? Asking a question. Um, I, I believe it is. I think I, I used it in a lot of different towns in Westport and Boston. Gravel is susceptible as in previous areas. Uh, let's see. There's a couple of things on, on this printout that was on, on, on the internet, on page four, talks about building, principal building height. But it doesn't talk about average grade. So I'm hoping that the regulations, when someone talks about building height, because it was originally left out of the regulations. That's another thing that was left out. Before we had a regulation of thirty five feet, you know, we had half stories, we had attics, we had. Nothing that's new. It's just that it's changed to the point that it doesn't work anymore for some reason. So now we got to say that, make sure that it says from the average grade. Because if you just say grade, grade could be in the front, grade could be in the back. You have to say from the average grade and the average grade has to be done by a surveyor. Yeah, there's also, it's also listed on page six, so I'm not sure if it's in, in or out of regulations at this point. Driveways, we talked about that now we're going to increase into twenty feet. Well, that's, that's, that's generous. That's good. But in a regular, you know, two car garage, you, you're really going to have, you know, not, you know, let's say nine foot doors has eighteen. You got another, you know, maybe four in between, two feet does twenty, but it's always good to have a little buffer so you're not running the tires over the yard. So I'm thinking maybe twenty two will be more, be a better number, maybe twenty four. And you get a little more driveway in your front area. And I still not sure exactly how this parking in the front or in the back or in the rear. That's another thing that, that kind of really put us all into a frenzy. Because the regulations stated that you can't have a garage in front of your house. When you have a fifty foot wide, you know, a narrow lot. If you go around Norwalk, half of Norwalk has garages in the front. Now the regulation says we couldn't do those, we can't do those. In the meantime, my, again, my clients got to wait for the decision to take place. I designed a beautiful, uh, uh, design which I brought into, to, to Sony to look at. And they thought it was terrific. The problem was it doesn't work because I have a driver on the side. I actually put the parking in the back. I did put a parking in the back. And, but we're still waiting because the driveway has to go on the side to get to the back. And, and I have a lot that I need to get closer to the, to the property line in order to make it work. And in the meantime, we wait. I'm sorry, that's, I had to thank you very much.
Uh, I think what we're going to do is go back and forth. Is there anyone on line? I'll call on you next.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
We can.
For the record, my name is Diane Lauricella, twenty one, Little Fox Lane. Uh, first I, I wanted to thank the commission and the staff for going back into the, uh, new regulations, zoning regulations. And beginning the process of tweaking and finessing, very important. I just would like to see it happen more often. Um, so I do relate to the previous speaker. Discussing the expedition of some of the changes that are pretty obvious. The first thing I wanted to just ask is, um, I know that having your meeting in the room that you are in has always been a challenge. I wanted to know, can all the commissioners and staff please turn up the volume or speak closer to the microphone? Because for those of us on Zoom, it is impossible to hear much of what you're saying. And we want to make sure we include your comments. So just a note on that. I wanted to, um, thank you for letting me speak on, online. Most of my comments have to do with ADUs or accessory dwelling units, especially detached variety. Um, I'm an environmental professional that urges and helps my clients go greener. And so I did know that some of the efforts made after much discussion to look at things such as. Uh, renewable energy, uh, orientation of buildings so that they can take on solar. Have not been included or upgraded. So for the next phase, the next round. I will send some input from the New England Partnership or NEEP, N E E P, that I have spoken to the staff and some of you members in the past. From that, I just wanted to say that I would like to have you look at these regulations. And try to consider making them more user friendly. I'm really glad I'm not an architect or in construction because I try to make sense of, I know details count and I love details. But I think they're a bit too complicated, although I will say, and bravo to having graphics that really helps. And whenever possible, add graphics. So I really thank you all for that idea. I do want to increase the green building design regulations, as I said before. Um, and I'll start with pay, you have, um, page two on the fifty five page amendments. I couldn't match it to a page in the regulations. It has to do with impervious surfaces. You state that there would be fifteen feet buffer in certain circumstances. And I'm just suggesting because of, it's been known scientifically, of course, that vegetative buffers help not only. Um, clean up the water, the, the runoff cools down the water and also slows it down. So by having possibly a double thirty foot buffer, if possible, in certain circumstances, when one is near wetlands or rivers. I think that would be better than just fifteen feet. So that you have that environmental functionality that you strive for, but I don't think it's a wide enough buffer. Um, on number, um, I guess your number three, you're revising table four point three point one, page fifty. Um, I guess I just, and it's just because I don't know your regulations well enough. But I, I just would like again to reconsider having detached ADUs or accessory dwelling units in select front yards. And I'll, I'll discuss that when we get to number twenty on your memo. Number five, also any place where you're looking at vehicular parking. I am very pleased that there will be the ability, as Brian Baker, I think showed the, the pictures, to allow. Garages and parking in the front. Um, in certain circumstances. I, I, I really think it has probably inhibited the building of ADUs detached and attached by in the past. Requiring that the parking takes place in the back. I think we should open up our minds and realize, again, I, because these amendments are a bit complicated. More than my mind could absorb in the time I had to look at them. Um, I really just want to urge you not to inhibit further ADU, detached, detached and attached ADU. By restricting parking. You should be much more loose, allowing maybe two vehicles, not just one, but at least one. And not necessarily in the back. Number six of your memo. Building standards, page seventy. Um, I would love to see under accessory buildings, which I'm assuming could be either a detached garage with a, an apartment over it. Or a detached ADU. If you could allow up to the two stories, not one and a half stories, again. Um, the ADU tweaks that you did back in last year and over the winter. Were somewhat helpful, but also restrictive, especially when we get to number twenty shortly. Um, uh, number seven on your vehicle parking, page seventy one. I don't understand all the concepts of your setbacks and parking in the front yard, but I also stated that, uh, please, uh. Hello? Okay. Number eight, vehicle parking, page eighty. It's stated, I guess, that required for two family must be in the back. It sounds like you're allowing front in certain circumstances. And I highly recommend that, but, uh, I'm not going to be able to look at. Thank you for putting it up on the screen, but I'm reading my notes. So I, now to the meat of, of my reason for speaking tonight. And I thank you for letting us speak about this. Number twenty, page two, five, zero. Which is page twenty three out of your fifty five on the original redlined, uh, copies, article four, section four point three point nine. Point G as in good point four. Number eleven. I, I very much, I know you're not. I would just like you to reconsider adding this to increase the maximum square footage of a detached ADU. The seven hundred square feet and some of the comments made by commissioners about why that should be enough. Again, is going to reduce the number of people jamming things and especially the seniors that are living in the larger homes. If they could be in a home that could accommodate their decades of family heirlooms to a degree. I, I suggest that we at least make it eight hundred and fifty square feet. If not nine hundred and fifty, as you know, the state had wanted you to make it over a thousand square feet. I, I understand why you did not want to, but initially someone had suggested six hundred square feet. You bumped it up to seven hundred. It's still too small. So I absolutely think this could be inserted by a wise commissioner and, and part of this particular round of changes. Number fourteen as well. This round of changes, you are going to, you are inhibiting ADUs because for those of you that understand affordable housing. If detached ADUs are built offsite and wheeled to the property and then they're attached to a base. That can reduce the price and there you get more affordable housing. But I clearly remember a commit, a particular commissioner who's no longer on the commission fearing that having wheels. And I'm not speaking about, um, um, what you'd see in a trailer park. I'm talking about wheels that once the detached, offsite built. Home is just locked in place and covered with landscaping. According to this regulation as written, you're not allowing it. And I think that is a huge mistake and oversight, which I did express more than once last year. It's still here. I'm sorry that I wasn't able to negotiate with the staff this summer. I had many things on my plate. But I just ask if one of the commissioners can ask that this be inserted, that you just remove. The phrase, any other wheeled. And shipping containers. Many of you that follow tiny homes know that use of shipping containers can be very attractive. And can definitely be utilized for housing and converted to housing. Because you have a number fourteen, you don't allow any other wheeled or transportable. Buildings, you are going to reduce our chances of having an honest and expanded ADU. Law, uh, rules. It's just, it's just well known. I do also want to thank you for adding the concern about vape shops. I don't know what the answer is, but I do, I do appreciate, I think it was Mr. Williams and the staff taking it seriously. Because they've popped up everywhere and it is a conundrum. I wanted you to consider, uh, for the next round, if not inserted by Mr. Cantor or others, reconsider renewable energy. Uh, as something that must be considered, not may, and not trading it off with lead achievable standards. There's nothing that you suggested for your, what's missing big time. And I will revisit it if you do not agree to put it in this time. And that is the concept of net zero energy buildings, net zero energy homes as well as commercial buildings. It is a thing. It is not new. Our city needs to get with, with modern feelings. Lastly, I do appreciate, um, Mr. Kleppen's introduction and the staff and all of you. Allowing for some form based zoning in our commercial industrial. But we're still maintaining the Euclidean zone, although I may be mistaken for single family homes. And there is a problem with redlining, historic redlining in the single family zones in Norwalk. So I really, um, ask again that you expand your minds on allowing well-built and very, uh. Attractive detached ADUs by opening up the regulations and not being so restrictive. Uh, thank you very much for your time and I will continue pressing you on detached ADUs. As well as letting the public know about the benefits of attached and detached ADUs. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Alina Rodesco Pichon and I'm going to spare you a whole big thing. I'm an architect. It, I, I'm with Skyview Builders, two eighty five Main Street in Norwalk. We, I, I sent it some drawings, but you know, I don't want to take, I know everybody's waiting and, and I'll just be brief. We designed a house, um, maybe about a year and a half ago, according to the old zoning. And we were ready to build it now. And now it's unbuildable, given the present zoning that was changed as of February. It's a, it's a small lot. It's fifty one hundred square feet. It's five hundred, fifty feet in the front. Um, and the way it stands right now. There is no room to put a garage in the back. Also, we would be going way over the impermeable allotment. And if, this is really more in support of the new changes that you want to make. But a lot of it for us, and I think for a lot of other people that have these small lots, are the setbacks and the parking requirements. Right now, um, the fifty foot setback for the parking, we, we have. Parking in the front with, it's part of the house and there's living space on top. So even if we were to take the garage out and move it back, we would still have that, that part of the house because that's within the thirty foot setback. It's just not buildable. It's not, we can build a house. If it's twelve feet on each side, we get twenty four feet for a house. So it's just not feasible. It's not. Even with, even using the regulations, we would be going way above. If we, if we had to put a garage in the back, we would be going way above the impermeable allotment. The, the address is eleven, um, Longview Court.
I'm sorry, the zone?
The zone CD two. The Zone CD two.
Did we ask questions?
No.
Okay, so I would just encourage you to please make the changes. And I, I again, I agree that we have, you know, people are waiting to get this built. And uh I do have it from Tammy Maldonado that if the changes go through, they would pass it right away. So as it stands, though, we're, we keep, we have to wait.
Yeah, just, just to clarify, because we we keep, we don't have the legal ability just to see, just everybody thinks everything's great and it works. There's still a process we have to follow.
Right.
First state statute, I can't, I don't have a plan.
Okay.
So we have to do a thirty-five day referral. We need to, we're gonna make some modifications tonight, probably maybe hopefully not a ton, but so we have to do that for a week or two.
Okay.
Commission needs to say, yes, that's a good idea. We have to schedule the public hearing. You have to give notice, run legal notices. So that's why December.
Okay.
Push the clock.
If it would be December, that would be great.
That's the plan.
Okay.
Ideally, January one, they would be in effect. That would, that's my.
Okay. All right. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Uh, again, we're gonna, nobody was set up for present. There's no one else on Zoom?
No.
Okay, um, Richard. You'll be next.
Good evening. Rich Bonifant, seventeen Park Hill Avenue. And thanks, Leopard, for your time. A few comments, but not too long. With the uh high-density agenda here, where we've been working on since the master plan and 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 up till now, you've created a traffic disaster, okay, in Norwalk. You look at the roads, they're all, they're all just filled up and people are giving road rages and honking horns and, you know, it's getting worse. So that doesn't include the strains on the water, the sewage, the schools, and the first responders. When I was reading the regulations, I did, I agree with you, they were very complicated. And I was trying to figure out, and I guess I got my answer tonight about parking. And it looks like you'd be able to park all over your front lawn. So. Right. Now with these larger complexes like you're been approving, I'm asking, like, for instance, like the, where the YMCA was um knocked down and you're gonna have that. I'm, I'm asking you to um please add to the requirements that dog-walking areas are are included on the site. I, I remember when uh you asked that question to the attorney who got the YMCA, or I'll call it that, approved for the apartments, and you asked them, are you gonna include like a dog-walking area? She just kind of laughed at you and said, it's not in the regulations, so I'm not doing it. You can go over to the bike trail in the back, or you can take them over to uh Matthews Park and let them do it there. And Matthews Park is not a dog park. And she actually said, we tried it at Waypoint to make a, a dog-walking area and maintenance was a problem, which is a nice way of saying nobody picked up, so just go ahead, just go over to the uh Matthews Park and just do it there. Okay. I realize that, that it's not your problem about the parks, but you kind of helped create it. If, if you don't require um areas for pets on, on site. Parking in urban, parking requirements in urban zones, like, like downtown uh Wall Street area here. I was here for uh when, when you passed the master plan or, or the last set of regulations. Three bicycle enthusiasts came here and convinced you it would make apartments more affordable if you eliminated all parking requirements in urban core. You're leaving it up to the developer to put in as many or few spaces as they want. So that's a formula to kill in-and-out businesses like liquor stores, delis, cleaners, and other tenants like that, like bakeries. Because apartment visitors and tenants, they're just gonna like sit in their, sit in their apartment take up street space and and add time with the apps that they can do on the phone. And you're gonna take up all the street spaces and kill all the in-and-out businesses. And I read that you were considering allowing daycare anywhere. Yeah, well, you tell me, who wants to hear eighteen screaming kids next door to you every day, right? I mean, if it happened to me, I'd be blasting back with loud country music and teaching somebody a lesson, but that's another story. But it did happen to, we, there was a daycare across the street from us. And what they do is they'll put a cone in their driveway because they don't want people turning around there. So people come to drop off their kids in the morning, they come whipping into your driveway, whether or not you got a, a person there nearby or not. They come whipping in your driveway to turn around. Or dads with big trucks like, or moms with SUVs, they come climb on your curb and crunch your sidewalk. And then they keep going and, you know, then, then you're gonna get a letter from the city telling you, you gotta fix your sidewalk. Yeah. See you later on that one. So I'm asking you to go easy on the people minding their own business and just want to enjoy a peaceful life here in Norwalk. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Pia O'Connell. I live on twelve Coachman's Court in West Norwalk. I volunteer treasure house and uh lately, uh we actually get more traffic now because people stop by and say, what's going on? I can't get down to the dump. Now, I know that uh there is construction there and I myself am trying to go there and many times the police says, no, go this way, go that way, whatever. So hopefully this, this will get fixed when, once that area is, is completed. However, my question is, since there is traffic going to the uh dump, are you gonna um expand that um street? And also, if you're gonna be putting uh parking spaces like on Main Street, that they're designated. Now, if you don't do that, and it's not wide enough, you're gonna get a lot of people parking on the streets. Like right now, when you're going to the dump, as you go around there, there cars parked all the way down to the dump. I, I assume that there are people that are maybe working there as well as the big trucks and so forth. Is this a, a, a city issue? Is this a federal issue, a town issue? I know some streets um are considered state. And are streets that go to the dump where a lot of people have to go and obviously big trucks, is that a consideration that's now being considered in terms of these buildings that are being built around that area? And also, I was looking at the area close to uh Lockwood Mansion. And I don't know, are they gonna take space from them to make the street wider? And I assume you're gonna have a um sidewalk, at least on one side. That was my question.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Good evening, Diane C.C. Olmstead Place. Good evening to the commissioners and staff. I just had a, I hope you'll bear with me. I was kind of scribbling notes as I was observing, but I just wanted to ask a procedural question first, just to make sure that I understand the process. The public hearing, that would be the adoption public hearing. For people that were speaking tonight, I assume you could still speak at that hearing. It's not a continuation where if you speak tonight, you can't speak again. I mean, if I'm wrong, you, you can tell me, but otherwise I'll assume.
Yes, it, this is, this is separate hearing.
Thank you. And then I'll also just point out some uh housekeeping, I think Ms. Laura Keller did. You folks might not realize it, but the folks on Zoom, we didn't have the benefit of hearing some of the commissioners um who spoke at the beginning, this uh Posnick and Mr. Williams and Mr. Rowena. So um we value all your input and like to hear it. And I'm thinking that possibly it's also not going to be on the um, on the city's YouTube recording. So um ma- maybe it'll be in the minutes, but I would have liked to have heard their feedback here. And then, and just a, a few points in general here. So it seemed to me that a lot of uh what was being addressed during this process had to do with uh what staff found um needed corrections when you, this, these codes were written kind of in theory, but then in practice, they created all kinds of problems and either staff recognized it or a land use attorney or an architect, you know, et cetera. But I was a little disappointed through this process that I haven't seen, and I, and I haven't gone through all of the redline and all the pages. But I didn't see where there was um real consideration to revisit the use list for the land uses in all of the zones. And I would have thought that this would be a good opportunity for you to reconsider some feedback you heard in the first round and and maybe reconsider it now. Um, in particular, um, well, the vape shops. So Mr. Kleppen, I was, I was most interested in the slide you had up, um, called other items of note. So um I'd like to get more information on, on those. And let me just address that now. So in, in particular about vape shops and also about um uh when you would expect to have the TMP and the ZBA comments. Um, so that would be plenty of time for the public to review those um before the next step in this. But back to the other items of note, there were two on there that I did want to speak to tonight. One is the vape shops. And um until you clarified the issue is with that about, there's no such thing as just strictly a vape shop. I didn't understand the, the rationale of why we just couldn't uh take that out. Because I was gonna suggest that we not make that permissible use anywhere and simply grandfather them in. But now I understand the difficulties of just about any retailer can sell smoke things and vape things and that twenty-five percent is hard to gauge. But I would say that, given the, you know, the public outcry, um, I at least appreciate you taking a closer look at that. The other thing that was on the slide was something I wanted to speak to as well beforehand. And with all due respect to uh former councilman Rich Bonifant, I have to disagree with him here. In terms of childcare, child daycare, um for, for the ones that are, are family, family child daycare centers in particular, um I think if anything, this city needs more of them. Um, what I was coming to speak to tonight about is I think that there's a, a lot of inequity in terms of the way you have the use in the zones now. They should, not only should they be, you know, more of them allowed, they should be allowed in all of the zones. And I noticed that in some of the, the larger single-family zones, it appears that those need special permits. And some of the other more dense, uh smaller residential and other zones don't, don't need a special permit. And I wonder why that is. Especially since some of the other larger parcels, there's more, you know, space between properties and there's more space on the property, et cetera. And I, I think that that's unfair. I think we need more of them, but I also think that they um should be allowed and spread out through the city. So there's an opportunity for more of those. The, so uh back to the, back to my original point though about, I was hoping that this exercise would have sent you back to taking a look at the land use table itself. And um I know that we have, either, either myself personally and or the East Norwalk Neighborhood Association and others have asked you to reconsider some uses, and I'll just go down the list again. I hope you'll reconsider it. I have a feeling you won't, but I feel compelled to at least have it on the record that that I'm asking for this. So um one obviously would be the, 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 whatever the definition ends up being of a vape shop that um, that we don't allow those and whatever's here is grandfathered. I would also say that um you should look at taking out um adult use establishments. Again, for whatever's here, it could be grandfathered in, but I don't see any um logical reason for why that you should be anywhere in the city. Also, um, concrete plants, distribution and fulfillment facilities, earth processing and contractor, um maintenance, storage yards, rock freshing, and public utility um supplies and storage. And so again, for whatever may already be in the city, I understand they would be continued to, you know, operate under, under those regulations. But I certainly wouldn't want to see any more of these coming into any of the neighborhoods or the ones that they're, that they're allowed in now. And I think for the most part, many of these things, again, um they provide a regional service that our neighbors are not willing to house, for lack of a better term. So, so our neighbors, our, our surrounding neighbors who all benefit from having this type of industries, um, you know, uh provide services to them, none of them um seem to be allowing this use in their own towns. And I, I think Norwalk could try to move away now from, from having all of these uses in there. And the, the other thing that I saw interesting um from the first round, um, and now this round is still in there in the use table. And I don't know if anybody brought it up the last go-around before February. I was wondering um what the logic is behind um the designation for schools where elementary and secondary schools um are basically allowed almost anywhere. But uh special education um type schools and for the disabled disabled, I'm sorry, for the disabled, I think is the definition actually in the regs. Why are, are those um not allowed in those zones? And also um the trade in the vocational schools. So I'm struggling to understand why you differentiate there, um especially for the ones for this disabled. Um, I want to, I, I think, I think there's something that can just be, be um, is possibly overlooked by this commission. And I would ask you to reconsider that those be allowed in every zone that elementary and the school be it. And then my final thing is, and I can't find the page that I saw it on, but staff would know this. I think in the redline edits that was published, I saw something that actually reduced the requirement for having to go to the historic commission. Uh whenever there's a change um comes before you, that would impact a um historic structure. It, it seemed like that may have been weakened a little bit under what circumstances you would have to refer to the historic mission for a review. And again, I apologize, I don't have that page, but maybe staff can uh take a look at that. And I just wondered why, why we'd be going the, the other direction um with that. And that's it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Maureen Faulkner. I live in two seventy-seven.
Can you come just a little closer?
I might have to go on to it too. Okay, my name is Maureen Faulkner. I live at two seventy-seven Sunrise Hill Road in Norwalk. I came to Norwalk forty-six years ago. Didn't intend to buy anything here, but I was lucky because I could afford it. It was ten, no, twenty-five dollars down for two weeks. And then after that, you paid up your mind to put down a thousand. So I got a thousand. And then it was up to the bank to approve me. And of course, I was a woman, but we made it. It was nineteen seventy-six. We were coming up the road. I've been very interested in civic affairs. And um to the point when I left the corporate world, I had followed Washington Street coming up. Raided, and I opened a shop down there for ten years, an Irish shop. Uh now I belong to the Connect Program, which is twelve years old. And uh, excuse my voice. And uh it's an ecumenical program, hoping to upgrade uh new concepts in Connecticut. We've worked on the past five years I've been involved. They've been here around twelve years. Senator Bob Douglas involved. We've gone from the clean slate program to uh improved education, gun control, and now affordable housing. So I got interested in affordable housing uh when they started to work on Wall Street a few years ago. And uh came to one of your meetings and uh it was very vibrant. Most of us didn't want them to uh chop down that nice little movie house down. They did that very quickly. And now uh the Affordable Housing Program for sixty-eight Wall Street has been in abeyance for a good five years for, for a variety of reasons. It took me a while, closure organization. I was your organization. I spoke into the shell. Went around to different folks who were in real estate. I know McCletchy is involved now in Darian. And I spoke to him. And it's going to take a year and a half to complete that five year on 68 Wall Street. Affordable housing isn't low income. And in fact, maybe middle income can't afford it. Nostalgia, you have needs, shelter and food to get yourself speed. So here we are. You're going to have affordable housing in the Y M C building, right? I used to swim there. I just hope that we can move things one further than we do. It takes years. I mean, that building horrible. But it's not only that building, it's other buildings. They go up for the well to do. The Uppsies come from New York. I came from New York. So anyway, and the streets are so crowded. I said to my son, please, we'll just leave the health car, get it out. This is a building anywhere, everywhere. But I hope you move this project along quickly. Thank you.
I don't see anyone online. By the way, I just want to note that Commissioner Kami Miguelis is joining. Myra, are you going to unmute?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I want to thank you, all of you for your time to do this. I know that it's dying of the day and everybody's tired. Thank you so much for your time. And the comment that I want to do is to allow daycare.
Can you give your name and address, please?
Uh, no, it's Myra Garcia, 43 Bettswood Road, Norwalk, Connecticut.
Thank you.
And the comment that I want to do is allow daycares in residential zone. It's very important for all the families. The young families that they are in the, in the city. A lot of people is coming to live here. And it's a good thing that you are trying to change and help these families with especially infant and toddlers. By my experience, families almost cries when I said, I do not have a space for you. And they said, I have to go back to work. What I would do? Sorry. I said, sorry, you can be on my waiting list. Thank you for your time and trying to, to help these families. And I don't think so that it will be a big traffic or a big problem. Because I have a lot of families that live in my neighborhood that they walk from to my daycare. And with a special permit, everything can be fixed. Cause we can have parking and we will not going to bother our neighbors. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name is Chris. The subject property is 5 Edgewood Street. Two things that Brian.
Chris, is that where you live?
It's a vacant lot, C D, C D two. I live right next door at 3 Edgewood. Brian touched on a couple of things, parking and retaining laws. With the retaining wall specifically, a lot of people think that you need to create a driveway to get to the backyard. A lot of lots, the grade is sloped in such a way that engineers require retaining walls. So to be five feet off of it, plus the wall, another foot, and then plus some way to walk through. Not to mention you got possible condensers and electrical meters. It just makes it kind of cramped. Whereas if you have zero or one, now you have the walkway, you're using up to your lot line. It just creates a more efficient way to get to, to residents, get to that. And then parking. I just want to read a quick letter that Wayne Di Avanzo wrote, who's a well-respected engineer who does a lot of work in this town. And this is specifically for garage doors and retaining walls. Some other things too. The restrictions of having garage doors not face the front or street side of a residence is unnecessary and counter to the desired goal of encouraging low impact development, particularly on any last lot less than 100 feet wide. On narrower lots, it is, it is not possible to place garage doors on the side. There is no room for safe backup from the space from the sidewall. This is exacerbated by the further requirement of the driveway needing to be off the property. This forces the driveway to be shoehorned down the side of the residence and the garage doors with the backup space or parking to be in the rear. This creates a large area of impervious surface to accommodate and virtually eliminates any backyard. Regardless of zoning definitions of pervious versus impervious surfaces and whether that contributes to zoning coverage or not, the added area that has been accounted for regarding the stormwater management requirements of the city and state. Whether paved or gravel, it creates a significant amount of additional runoff that has to be mitigated. This is even an issue on wider properties. If a property should have a moderately high restrictive layer in the soil, this creates the need to raise the grade, which often triggers for the need for retaining walls. Nobody wants a retaining, it costs money. And sometimes it's just a necessity as, as probably not. Offered, which often triggers the, the need for retaining walls, which presents an issue for another zoning regulation regarding setback from property lines for retaining walls. The raising of the grid, and again, a lot of the lots slope like this, so you just need it. Nobody wants to put them in, they're expensive. This, this raising of the grid also creates issues with slopes of driveways forcing garage slabs to be higher and creating issues with the height regulations of the house. While subjective, most would agree that aesthetically paving or crushed on on nearly entire backyard is worse than garage doors facing the street. It also creates a negative livability of the property, maintenance issues with snow plowing. And safely, and safety issues with adequate turnaround space. In the back, people go in to get their groceries. They forget, I'm only going to be two minutes. Somebody else comes in. Creates a problem, just friction. It is hoped that the commission will reconsider the prohibition of front-facing garages on all residences. It should be also clarified that zoning definitions of pervious and impervious surfaces are not synchronized with practical engineering requirements to mitigate stormwater runoff. That's just garages and retaining walls. And this particular letter was written by Fairfield County Engineering. A guy named Wayne Di Avanzo, and I'm sure some of you know. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on? I'm seeing, okay, in the audience? Sure.
Hello, everyone. Thanks for being here. Seems like a long evening. Anyways, my name is Dennis Brown, 22 Clara Drive in Norwalk. You guys granted me a subdivision back in April, four lot subdivision, 72 South View Avenue. I'm still trying to build or develop or get something approved. I finally caved into the parking in the back. My only negative is I'm going to have four houses in a row with 24 feet apart of pavement all the way across. So I'm going to have 150 feet of pavement by 24 feet all the way across the back like a road. To me, it, it takes away from the yards of the tenants that I'm going to have there. It just feels negative to me. So if we are going in this direction, allowing garages in the front like we always did and, and get our four parking spaces, whatever, but behind the setback, I'm fine with that. And I'd rather give yards to the tenants. So I'm going to rethink everything and maybe withdraw my application and try again, because we're going to be, it's not going to be till January anyways, so. Uncharted territory for me. I've been doing this 50, 49 years, so. Never had to wait this long. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? If not, I will close the public comment. We shouldn't be hearing. Steve, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have much. I think a couple of things that we heard. I mean, I think a lot of it was related to the C D two zone and two-family house. I would point out one clarification point prior to the regulation change, you couldn't do a two-family house with the lot that was so I think that's just some perspective. But again, I apologize. Our goal was not to make it more difficult. It's the opposite of what we were trying to do.
More into the microphone.
Yeah, hold it right into my mouth. Okay. I gotta go to the angle. There you go. So yeah, so our goal was to make production of two-family houses easier, not harder. We understand the regulations as written are making it difficult. We think the changes that we proposed with a few tweaks will address, I think, all the concerns we heard tonight. I understand there are a lot of changes, but I would offer that 75% of the changes that are in there are more grammatical type things and minor issues, whereas the four or five things that Brian and I talked about tonight are the substantive ones that really are impacting the specific developments. And again, you know, the timing is what the timing is. I can't change, change the statutory clock and you know, we adopted regulations in February. We didn't start seeing these issues popping up until a couple of months after, as people started designing projects around those regulations. So that's why we're at the timing that we're at.
It's okay. If that's it, we'll close the public hearing. Go on to your other business. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. See you, Nick. I'm going to, I'm going to move the remaining items around a bit. I'm going to start with approval of the minutes of our September 18th meeting. Nick, Nick has moved, Anna has seconded. Any comments on the minutes? If not, do this in show of hand. Those in favor?
I need to go to the stage for this.
Okay. With one extension. Pardon me?
Tammy Grayson.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Tammy. Next, I want to talk just for a minute and Brian may have some comments also. Earlier this, I'm sorry. I'm getting ahead of my, getting ahead of my seat. I wanted to speak briefly about the capital budget. Two weeks ago, I attended a special public hearing on the city budget. It wasn't really about the capital. It was about the city budget. And it was a very, very high level conversation. First, there was a presentation by Finance Director of the City, then there was a presentation by the Finance Director for the Board of Education. Then it was opened up to the public and the issues that were raised. And again, they don't have anything to do with the capital budget were the need to stop the hemorrhaging of Spanish-speaking teachers from Silvermine Elementary School. And requests by several people for addition staff for the T M P. The, the reason I was invited as a member of the panel to this hearing is because with the combination of the planning and zoning commissioners, the, the role of the planning and zoning commission regarding capital budgets is, I guess, as of last year, as it was done last year effective this year has changed. I'm not sure anymore what our role. But certainly the meeting that I attended really had nothing to do with what even under the revised regulation. Now, whether we're going to go through the capital budget again this year as we had in previous years, I'm not even certain about that, number one. Number two, it won't be my issue, it will be an issue for the new, the new chair. But I, I just wanted to report that to you.
Excuse me, Lou, could you please speak a little closer to the microphone as well? It's very muffled to hear you out here in Zoom land.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry about that.
Thank you.
I, that meeting as well. I commented just from my understanding of that meeting was that it was an opportunity for the public to provide feedback on both the operating and the capital budgets at the very beginning of the budget cycle. And it just so happened that the people who showed up to comment primarily cared about things in the operating budget. But I, I, I hear what you're saying about our role still being ambiguous, but I think it could have, there could have been comments about capital. It just didn't happen.
Exactly, exactly.
Well, I knew at one point we were looking at sending some modifications to the ordinance committee. Do we have any updates on where that's at? Sorry, capital budget ordinance revisions?
It's still pending. They're not going to get effective into this cycle soon.
Okay.
Yeah, we, I think, yes, we sort of tabled that conversation, so we should take it back.
Okay, any other discussion regarding? Okay, we've approved the minutes. We've talked about the capital budget. Finally, the election of officers. Richard Rowena, Darius Williams and myself served as the nominating committee for officers for this coming year, which begins at the end of this meeting. Joint recommendation is for Chair Nick Cantor. For Vice Chair Ellen Welch. And J J to continue as Secretary. I notified all three of their nominations and they're all willing to serve. So the first thing I need to ask is, are there any nominations from the floor? Notable silence, as in most. Right. I, I think in fairness, we ought to do this one officer at a time. First, Chair Nick Cantor. Is there a motion to approve his nomination? Anna has moved. Is there a, okay. We have a second from Mr. Bryce. Any discussion? Right, if not, all those in favor, put the show up. Right? If not, all those in favor, put the show of hands. And looks unanimous. Okay, next. As Vice Chair, who will serve as Chair in the absence of the Chair, Galen Wells, who has been serving on this commission for quite some time. Has quite a depth of knowledge. Can I have a motion to elect David Wells? Diana has moved for a second. Okay. Mr. Bryce has seconded. Again, show of hands, all those in favor? Then it looks unanimous. And finally, J J, who has served admirably, admirably on those few occasions when we need her services as Secretary. And I have a motion Okay. Mr. Bryce has moved. Is there a second? Okay, Anna has seconded. Again, all those in favor? Okay, those are the officers for the coming year. Nick, turn the meeting over to you.
First off, we thank you for your service in Chair for six years, seven years?
Yeah, I think so.
I think so. So they're I think that that comments are directly.
Sure, just picking up on what the the bulk of the conversation tonight was. I personally, I wrote down a few things that I will look at in terms of some small tweaks with the C D two zone, but I other things that were commented on. In my mind, I was not going to recommend any changes, but I'll wait to hear from you guys if you want to discuss stuff. Your next meeting is actually next Wednesday. The agenda's not super heavy, so I'm hoping we can go back and come up with some recommendations on that, because as I mentioned, there's a thirty-five day clock that starts from when we get that document finalized and we have to refer it out to folks. If it pushes past a couple of weeks, we start to get into questions about when we can have the meeting in December, because you have one scheduled meeting in December. I think it's at the beginning. So Brian and I talked, well, maybe we cancel that meeting and then you just have a meeting the following week just to make sure we beat the thirty-five day clocks. But I think we can answer that question next week, but just a couple of things to kind of put in there. But if you have any items that you felt particularly strongly about based on comments, there were some things that I had thought about that needed addressing. I think the C D two stuff was, I think Brian and I got it pretty good now. There's maybe a small couple tweaks. But if there's other stuff you want us to talk about now or anything?